Regular meeting Thursday, May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty at seven A M. Or P M, excuse me, I'm used to working A M. Sorry. So, um, we need to approve the agenda, approve the minutes of five fourteen twenty. Warrants, old business, approve excess weight permits. Schedule A T V work session, town agent position. New business, black top bid award. Zoning violations there. Six public comment. You can call in at eight oh two, eight two three, zero one one six, extension one one one. And then the executive session for legal, um, relative and property personnel. Have a motion? Second.
I like your many agenda. Like, uh, it probably should go under public comments. Have an email. Sue Kerem that I asked to be placed on the agenda, but I think it needs to be read. That's what we're asking for in the comments, so we put it under the comments.
Like if it has personal names in it, you can't do that.
Part of it, we can have, um.
In public comment?
Yeah, we can do it in public comment. The person I agree with, that's fine.
Alright. So you're sticking with the amendment? Okay, so, um, Bob? Okay.
I'll, I'll second with the amendment.
Alright.
Well, public comment is not till the end of the meeting.
Right.
Um, are you, are you watching the meeting on, uh? On Kathy Lee? Okay, can you, can you call in when we, when we call for a public comment? Otherwise, uh, we're just. Uh, but it, but it prevents anyone else from. Alright, alright, well, you can hold.
Alright, so we have a motion on the table, um, with an amendment. Uh, Mike made the amendment, Jamie second. So, Bob? Do you approve?
I approve.
Um, I approve. Ronnie? Jamie?
I.
Mike? The eyes have it? Okay. Um, approval of the minutes from five fourteen twenty. And motion please?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? I say I. Bob? Ronnie? Okay. Mike?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Okay, the eyes have it. Warrants? I lost them for a second, sorry. Alright, payroll? Nine thousand four twenty-three sixty-five. Payroll, seven thousand one twenty forty-two. Accounts payable, thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. And five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars was to the Benton County Sheriff's Department. Three thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixteen cents was to Cassella Waste Management. Two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-one cents to Mount Power. Nine thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty cents to M V P Health Plan. Um, second one. Accounts payable for thirty-six thousand nine twenty-three sixty. Um. There was a two thousand and nineteen tan truck payment, one of five, for twenty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars and fifty-one cents. Then the last one, electricity cost was for three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. And that's it. Can I have a motion?
I, I have a question, and on the, um. Truck payment to United Bank. Um, do we know when we're gonna have delivery of that truck? I mean, we're making a payment, we just made a payment on a vehicle we don't even have.
We have that truck.
Okay, so it has been delivered?
The new one hasn't come yet, the new one hasn't come yet.
What's this payment, is this the payment on that new truck or a different one, Linda, I'm sorry?
Different one.
Okay, so this is payment one of five on a different vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I was, thought it was on the new one.
Nope. Okay, with that, any other discussion? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay, um, Bob?
I.
Ronnie? Mike?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Angie, I. Okay. Moving on to four, old business. Approval of the excess weight permits, we need approval for Cardinal Logistics Corporation and. United Mutual Food and Company. Motion? A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Bob?
I.
Ronnie? Mike?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Angie, I. Alright, B, schedule A T V work session.
So, uh, I, I believe I was the one to put that, uh, on the, on the agenda. And it was to get the board together, and I will, uh, propose. Um. So I'm trying to figure out how to get rid of the echo. I gotta take it off mute, I think, uh. Uh, uh, in any case, I'm gonna propose, uh, Tuesday night at six P M. For the, uh, for the work session. I think we wanna bring some structure around A T V use, and we wanna bring some enforcement, and in order to do that, we're gonna have to have a, uh. Uh, 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 an ordinance. So let's, uh, it, the purpose of this is to schedule a work session for the select board. To, uh, to work through the details and the specifics of a proposed ordinance. And just to let everybody know, uh, it, it is a new ordinance, it's not the one we were working on last year, we got some, uh. So it has been, uh, the. Yeah, it was, uh, we started with the, uh, with the. B L T C's proposed, uh, or model policy, and then we added in some specifics, or as would I add it in. The work session, coming out of the work session is when we'll have an ordinance that we will propose to the town. Or at least that's the thought. Is everybody okay with Tuesday at six P M for a work session?
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Now, that's could be at the town office, correct, Bob? Angie, you're muted.
Yeah, yeah, I'm you. There you go.
Um, yes, at the town office is only for the five of us. Um, we're gonna have to have the number for the public to call in. And it will be the one, eight oh two, eight two three, zero one one six, extension one one one. And hopefully down the road, when we can meet in larger groups, we will have a meeting. That the public can come to as somehow. And I want everybody to know that I've read all the emails. And I do read them, and I take it all under consideration. Yep, alright, anything else to be said about that? We're good?
We're gonna, we're gonna allow phone calls in there now, and while we're working on it, excuse me, while we're working on the ordinance?
We're gonna be here, so yes, one of us can answer the phones, I suppose. Okay? Hopefully, we can work that out. Alright, C is a town agent position. Um, it's supposed to expire on July one. But I've spoken to Vermont City and Leagues. And section twelve transitional provision. Any elected town agent in office on the effective date may serve the remainder of his or her term. So her term will expire in March of twenty twenty-one. And at that time, we can hire her, make a position, whatever, as we still see fit. I just wanna say that I've, she's helped me tremendously, she's wonderful, and she helps. Everybody a lot, so we need to look at that in the future, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that she was good until March twenty twenty-one. Alright? Any discussion on that? Okay, moving on to new business. The black top bid award to, um, the recommendation from the road foreman is. Wilk paving for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. For eighteen hundred and fifty ton at sixty-nine ninety-six a ton. Motion?
Make a motion to follow Strohl's recommendation.
A second?
Thank you, I'll second it.
Okay. Bob?
I.
Ronnie?
I.
Mike?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Me, I, Angie. Alright. There zoning violation? Z A?
That, that's me.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I think that's referencing zoning violations.
Okay, gotcha, sorry.
No, that's okay. My, my question to the, the board is. Um. I've been getting quite a few complaints on zoning violations. Some of them probably aren't gonna be the easiest. Some legal activity. Excuse me, I, I just wanna know what this board. Generally feels, how far you want me to go with things before I. Go ahead and, and, and go to some violations, most of it is, um. Unsightly materials, cars, you know, a bunch of old gas grills, washers, dryers. That kind of stuff out in front of people's houses, and, I mean, I haven't done a whole lot with it, I've done some. But I don't wanna start something that we're, we're not gonna back it up type thing.
Could you please tell me, cause I don't know what you have to do, so what do you do if somebody's? Out of code, do you like to send them a letter first, and then you?
No, my, my first, my first line of. Um, contact is, um, I try to, I try to contact them in person.
Yep.
Okay, I, I definitely think that's way better than. At both barrels, you know, and the, well, they're, they're seeming much more receptive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's my first line.
Yep.
It's worked a couple times, um, being perfectly honest with you, um. And I had a couple permits recently that are probably gonna end up with the D R B. Um. Require some legal activity, but we're okay with that. Because, because they're just, you know, they're. Me, the zoning, these aren't, they're, you know, they didn't meet the zoning requirements, zoning by law requirements for what they're looking for. Um, it's just the complaints, you know, I mean, it's an, it's an ongoing thing, we've all heard it forever and ever and ever. I just, for you guys want me to go with it, and, and, you know, I just want your general feeling. I mean, I know where I wanna go with it, but.
I'm okay with you contacting the person and doing what you have to do, and then go from there if it becomes a problem, I mean. Obviously, you know what you're supposed to do, do it.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
No, that's, yeah, and that's, you know, I respect that.
Bob? Does anybody have anything?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, and I apologize, I missed some of it, cause I was, uh, the person we had on hold dropped, and I was answering that call. But, uh, if I understood it correctly, uh, Mike, I'm gonna reiterate your question is, uh, how far, how, how much teeth do we really wanna put into, uh. Into enforcing the zoning laws? I, I'm not, but I didn't hear your example, I'm sorry. What, was your example the, uh, cars or, or?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's junk cars, um, some places have multiple old gas grills, or washing machines, or dryers. Refrigerators. Um, just, just some general junk.
But, uh, now, so my question on that would be, is, I mean, i- is that truly a zoning violation? According to our current zoning laws, in which case, uh, you know, you would have to reach out to them, I suppose.
Right, and so, some people are actually operating some little businesses illegally out of, you know, out of zoning compliance. So, you know, but I don't know if I really wanna attack that at this point. You know, it's kind of a, kind of tough times right now, I, you know, I'd rather not go that route really hard. Like, to speak to some of them, but, and I will, but I don't really want, that's not what I'm, I'm after, it's the person who has all kinds of stuff in their yard that people. And, and, you know, it's not me driving around, it's someone that makes a legitimate complaint, either by phone call or through an email. Um, you know, it's not, it's not me driving around looking for stuff, it's, it's a legitimate complaint, someone calls or someone emails me, then I go look at it.
I, I just do. So, I, I, thanks, Mike, I appreciate it, and so, uh, um, I mean, if it was me, I would be pretty lenient with people letting, letting them do what they do with their property. But you are the zoning administrator, so I totally agree with Angie. Uh, it, you, uh, you know, how you enforce it is up to you.
Right, and also says in the bylaws that you're supposed to issue a zoning, zoning fine. For the bylaws, so, I mean, if you think there's a problem, I think you should do that.
Right, uh, but then we don't have a zoning ordinance, I mean, I'm sorry, we don't have a, you know, a junk ordinance. Uh, we had talked about it last year, and it, uh, I'm not sure why it got tabled, but it got tabled.
It's in the bylaws, isn't it, Bob?
Yeah, and those are two separate things, right, uh, there's an ordinance and there's the bylaws, if we don't have an ordinance, we do have bylaws. So we need to make sure that, uh, whatever we're enforcing, we actually, we have the bylaws to, to back it up.
But there's a section in the bylaws about that.
Uh, right, right, and, and you just need to make sure that we're adhering to it. And I wouldn't say, and I agree with Mike, it's not adhering strictly to it, I would give them some leeway, I would only, uh, enforce the egregious thing. And kind of respect the, the liberty of, of, of individuals.
I agree, except. Except for when it becomes a problem and you have, um. An enormous amount of trash or junk, and it's.
Absolutely.
Causing, you know, rats or whatever, and that does happen.
Right, and that's why, and that's why, one of the reasons we tabled the, uh, or the junk car ordinance was because it combined hazardous waste with junk cars. And the remediation for junk cars was offense, so clearly that wasn't a health violation, it wasn't attracting rats. But I would absolutely agree on anything that's gonna be a health violation and attracting rats and vermin and those sorts of things. And emitting a smell, those, that has to be enforced. But, uh, but again, that's my personal opinion, and I gotta get off my soapbox, and say that I'm what the zoning administrator Mike is, he needs to, that's needs to be his judgment.
Well, and, and, and to, to solidify that, Bob, I mean, you know, all you guys, really, I've been with the health officer. Uh, some visits to some pretty unsightly places that have had a significant amount of trash. Garbage? That we have dealt with, um, and we've dealt with it accordingly, the, the two of us together, we have. Uh, on a couple of different occasions, at least gone around, um, you know, prevent some different things.
Mike, I, I totally trust your judgment, so it, it, to me, it's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other, um, comments on that, from anybody? Ronnie or Jamie?
Oh, I appreciate you doing a face-to-face first and giving them a fair shake at trying it.
Okay.
Taking it themselves, so.
Alright, so now we move into public comments, and I just wanna say that, where'd that paper go, Linda? Green Up Day is Saturday, five thirty. So Green Up Day in Vermont is coming Saturday, May thirtieth, bags can be picked up at the transfer station sixty-four, sorry. Six forty-five Maple Grove Road, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, from eight A M to four P M. Because of the COVID nineteen, we will not have any gatherings at the, um, Legion Pavilion. All aspects will be run from the transfer station.
So I have, um, I had a couple of people after our last meeting. Ask if there was any way that we could put the phone number up, on, on a board while we're, uh, at a public comment open. Because we read the number and they didn't have time to write it down.
Yep, I can, we can figure out how to do that, might take a little bit, but we'll try to figure that out.
Right.
Next meeting.
You know, we can do it, I know, the host could do it or not.
Alright, we'll ask the host if she can figure that out for us. Okay? Alright, so moving into public comment, the number again is one, eight oh two, eight two three, zero one one six. Extension one one one. I'll say it again, one, eight oh two, eight two three, zero one one six, extension one one one. And Bob, I think you've had somebody, correct?
I do have somebody on hold, hang on just a second, let me get them here, and I've got a second one on hold, I actually have two.
Okay.
Hi, thanks for, uh, thanks for holding, I'm gonna put you on speaker if you could state your name and then make your comment, um, uh. And actually, we'll test it out a little bit first, just to make sure everybody can hear you. Alright, hang on just a second. Okay, uh, go ahead and state your name.
This is Dr. Chris Barsati.
Oh, uh, I, uh, okay, um, it's, it's Chris Barsati. And he's called in to make a statement, can everybody hear him?
Yes.
Okay, uh, go ahead. Uh, Dr. Barsati, you can go ahead and make your statement, I think everybody can hear you.
Uh, can, can you confirm, is it Dr. Chris Barsati?
Yes. Uh, excuse me, uh, eh. Uh, Chris, are you talking? Oh, okay, uh, sorry.
I, I am talking, um, but there are two people in our household that we should make a statement, and, uh, I'll be first.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. So, um, I'm here to, to make a comment about the A T V ordinance, um, thank you for taking my, uh, time to speak with me. So for everybody in the select board and on the call, I am E R. I am talking, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So, should I turn over?
Uh, no, we've heard everything you said so far.
Okay, but I can't actually watch the audio, video and audio and listen to the song, so please let me know when I start speaking.
Um, go ahead and start speaking.
Okay, so thank you for taking the time to speak with me, um, to those of you and the select board as well as people on the call. I am E R physician, and I work at the frontline of W E R, in the tri-state region. I also work on trauma care and trauma prevention at the national level. I was the past chair of the trauma section of the American Policy Commission, I work with the College Surgeons, and the National Academy of Medicine, among others. I stated this on behalf of myself as a proud citizen, and not intended to represent the positions or beliefs of these corporations. The purpose of my call is to give you and my fellow policy citizens information that they need to know in order to understand the injuries associated with A T V misuse. I use the term misuse because it describes the root cause of the problem, people using A T Vs in such a way that it causes injury. This is commentary about behavior, not to fight. It's also essential for all you to know that the problem of A T V misuse already exists in our region, and will increase if this ordinance is put into effect. I have cared for dozens of A T V trauma victims in my seventeen-year career here in this region. There's a pattern of injuries associated with A T V misuse. I'm gonna describe some of that for you. The cases I describe here are composite, drawn from my many years of experience in clinical practice and medical education. These composites do not identify specific individual, and any resentment to persons living or dead is entirely coincidental. However, the injuries described here are entirely consistent with the injuries I have seen in our region, and which I know will continue. A T V misuse causes traumatic brain injury. People with these injuries bleed into their heads, and whole sections of their brain are either destroyed by the impact, or by the slowing that comes after. At certain speeds, helmets don't stay, they don't even stay on. Patients can arrive partially scalped, as helmets are pulled off from the force of impact. Protective face gear is also damaged by negligent driving. These patients have complex fractures of their face, and arrive to be E R gapped before air from the blood and teeth and piece of tongue that has fallen into the back of their mouth and blocked their airway. Bone and tissue matter cannot pass through suction catheters, so we have to manually pick out the teeth and parts of tongue before moving. Before being able to suction the blood and find the airway. Chipping A T Vs is no common injury and causes death because it crushes the chest cavity. Both sides of the chest ball break, so that when you try to breathe, you actually suck in a broken part of your chest ball and compress the lungs further. These patients are literally bleeding into their lungs. For all of them, you have to put tubes into their chest to drain the blood and re-slate the lung. For many, we often have to put a lot of ventilators to breathe for them. As you know, we are currently in a pandemic of COVID, and ventilators are scarce supply. Sometimes, in really bad cases, we actually have to open up one side of the chest, which is very, so that we can see the heart and major blood vessels. And then grab them off to stop the bleeding that we have to get found. You can see the release flash from vascular injury. In the worst cases, we have to open up both sides of the chest like a clamshell, so we can see everything. Unfortunately, what we typically find in situations are vascular injuries at the level of a heart that can't be fixed, and the patient dies on the table. When you crash your A T V in the woods or on a back road, you can take a permanent long time to find you. Uh, you can leave it out so quickly that it cannot be saved by the time you get to the E R. So far, I've addressed only the injuries covered by A T V rider. Perhaps it was more relevant to the vast majority of people on, in this town, who will not benefit from this ordinance. Of the injuries inflicted by A T V refusers onto another person who just happens to be in their environment. Swerving a car.
Excuse me.
Being thrown from a horse group by an A T V.
Uh, Dr. Barsati, uh, the chair is, the chair is trying to speak.
Um, three minutes, could you wrap it up, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have about another thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to reiterate, uh. The what's more relevant to the vast majority of people on, in this town on this call, will not benefit from this ordinance. Are the injuries inflicted by A T V refusers onto another person who just happens to be in an environment, swerving a car, and this A T V, bicycle, pedestrian, start by each. Ten people who are threatened by assault, is set up by some A T V refuser. These injuries, head injuries, neck injuries, broken limbs, collapsed lungs, and the total violence are important because they demonstrate the risk and the harm that non-A T V riders will be subjected to. By the passage of this ordinance. This ordinance poses a danger to public health, and it's clear that we have not solved it through. We're putting the health welfare statement in three hundred of our towns and districts, therefore, I strongly recommend you to keep in the time of council. All additional experts, including medical people, experts, and other towns in this, separate from the work session proposed by you in tonight's meeting, before we proceed further. Give questions?
Thank you for, um, calling in and telling us.
Uh, thank you, uh, and, uh, Dr. Barsati, you said that you had other people there to make comments as well?
So, no, um, patient, if you wish to make a call? I think she's, uh, standing at the time.
Okay, uh, can we, uh, okay, thank you, and we do have other, we do have other, other public comments.
Thank you for your concern, they're legitimate.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, hi, um, so, uh, the, uh, uh, please state your name, and, uh, stop after you state your name, and we'll find out if everybody can hear you.
Okay, and my name is Tiffany Zwinda.
Did everybody hear that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we can hear you just fine, go ahead and make your comment.
Okay, um, many people support legal access to town roads for A T V U T Vs and side-by-side. They don't usually participate in email campaigns, they often are. They often are writers and, or lawyers, or rather humble, hardworking locals who just want to enjoy their hobbies and past times with their families and friends. The majority of A T V supporters also tend to, to not be politically active. And out loud with their views as the anti-A T V and heavy restriction people are. Because of that, I tried to give these, this silent majority in our community a voice. I wrote a very simple letter and posted it online, and this might be willing to sign on in agreement. I know that you're receiving some very long. I know that you're receiving some very long-winded and lawyerly complaints about the possibility of an ATV ordinance. That allows riders on our roads. And I wanted to show you the large amount of people. That disagree with the extremely local minority of complainers. You have much support from taxpaying, hardworking and local citizens. For an ordinance that would allow use of ATVs, UTVs and side-by-sides on our town roads. These citizens wanna ride openly, legally, with enforcement and regulation. With a liberal ordinance. That allows riding on all town roads. Additionally, in conversation with local law enforcement, I've learned that opening all roads. Would actually make regulation for season enforcement much easier um for them. Um, we need this transparent and clear relationship with law enforcement to help cut down. On the recent vigilante justice, which has been. Passing in panel, which includes questioning people. Um when they are seen with an ATV on a trailer and you know what was that person's license plate? Filing ATV rider and even following ATV rider in your car while filming them. Lastly, I wanted to post that that anyone out. Of posting this and asking for signatures, we received over a hundred positive responses. This is without even going out and soliciting. I just hope this list to you, along with the short letter that I posted um fine. And everyone agreed with. Um, so we're still continuing to garner support and even more riders and supporters. Are dying this minute. And I wanted to also post that everyone on the list that I sent you, the hundred and sixty-eight people, are all panel residents. So I just wanted to thank you all for your consideration on the. Perspective for um ATVs and UTVs and panel.
Alright, um. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. I I'm sorry to rush, but I gotta answer the next one. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it again. Um uh thank you very much for your comments and whoever was calling in, if you could call in again, the problem is I can't pick it up without hanging up on the person that's talking. So um uh if you could call in again, I'll make sure I I I I answer it for you. Alright, so I'm gonna wait for the next call and then I'll and then I'll pick it up when they call. Unfortunately, what was happening is somebody was calling in while speakers were speaking. And I I I can't pick it up while they're speaking without interrupting the speaker. So whoever was just calling in, I apologize, you tried several times. If you can try again now between calls, uh I can pick it up. Uh hopefully you're watching on CAT TV.
I I can, uh while we're waiting for a phone call, I can um bring up.
Here we go. It just came, it's coming in now.
Okay.
Hi, uh so uh this is a select board. And it sounds like you're you're listening, you're watching on CAT TV and there's a bit of a delay. I can hear myself talking through the phone. Um is, would you like to make a public comment?
Yes, I would.
Okay, if you could. I I can hear you. If you could state your name first and I'll ask uh the board if they can hear you also.
This is Jenny Doer.
Okay, um did everybody hear?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh go ahead, uh go ahead, Miss Doer. You can start making your comment now.
Yep, thank you. Before I start with anything about ATVs, I want to suggest. That the panel board letting everyone know that the Fenningson Select Board is requiring masks. When in public and in any business establishment as of today. This uh directly affects all panel residents. I did write to you asking you to say that for the moment. Um so, uh regarding ATVs, I would like to see the town focus on figuring out if it is possible to create public ATVs in town. I remain unconvinced that any actually exists since the list was requested over a year ago. I enjoy ATVs and people who have their own land to ride on are lucky. People who don't are lucky if they have friends with lands that let them ride. Opening up roads, which does not yet been addressed, is premature at best. I support the select board creating a passport for reasonable people to do this research and report back. If when a policy or ordinance is created, I strongly urge the town to put it to a townwide vote. It doesn't matter who's. Getting information or people signing off on Facebook. There are thirty-five hundred people in this town. Two hundred people or fifty people doesn't matter. I already thought this, but upon receiving multiple emails from a group message, this is much more important. The emails that are both disturbing are the ones saying they support everything our letter stated, but they don't want their name used because they are scared. They live in fear of the quote bullying. Their words not mine. But I cannot refuse that as people have been receiving threatening emails, experiencing bullying behavior on social media when they dare speak up. And even displaying in-person threatening behavior of blowing down in front of phones and revving engines. A townwide vote takes away the need to put your name and face out there. Opening roads affects all of us. To push back on a power panel because people felt others were quote shutting plans down their votes is nothing to be dared to say. What came out of the tower panel? Litter volunteers, creation of recreation and trail volunteers, a listing of businesses. Nothing has intruded on anyone else's life should they wish it not to. This, on the other hand, has the potential of being incredibly intrusive. Finally, any work session or townwide conversation needs to happen in person. Given that we are in the midst of a pandemic, just to wait until we are safe to gather larger groups of people. I also, I just wanna say, I hope that all letters and calls received will be a past few minutes. Just like subjectively selected public comments were on January thirteenth, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna go ahead and name that one up and uh we'll see if we get anymore. I guess I would like to make a public comment. That is that uh we do know that ATVs are dangerous, as are many activities. Skiing, snowboarding, uh motorcycling. Uh all kinds of things are dangerous and I would hope that everybody and anybody who's out there enjoying that kind of recreation is taking the appropriate cautions and taking that into consideration. The reason I believe we need an ordinance is to bring some regulation and bring some enforcement. And to ensure that we have legal riders out there, to ensure that who's on our roads or or uh riding ATVs are registered, are insured. Uh and and uh and and uh are legal riders. Now, uh this is the same, now I'm gonna go ahead and answer this one. I've got somebody else calling in. This is the one I missed multiple times. Hi, this is the Select Board, Public Comments. Uh can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I I apologize. I did see you calling in a couple of times and I couldn't answer because somebody else was speaking and it would have interrupted them. Um I'm glad you called back. Uh can you, if you can state your name and we'll make sure everybody uh can hear you and then you can go ahead and make your comment?
Yes, Bob, it's Sue Keraman. And first of all, a lot of people if they've got the TV on, most people that are calling in, the voices are so muffled. That it's hard to hear what anybody is saying from people calling in. Even even some of your voices are very muffled. Chris Barsati's letter was calm like every other word. So just so you know, it's not very, the coverage is not very clear.
Well, I'm 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 hopeful that when it uh gets posted, it'll be uh it'll be clearer, but we'll we'll have to find out, you know, they do post uh, they do post it as well.
Okay, well, the reason for my call is I have written in several times. And I've talked to Mike Gardner several times. And I wrote an email in and I wanna know what is going to be done about the town administrator position. You should have an open position. The position was not eliminated. You fired the position. It's just like if you fired the road foreman, you would have an open position. Um, why is there nothing posted on the webpage? And what are we going to do about the open position? And also, you hired a part-time person to work. I'm not sure how many hours a week. For a certain amount of time and could you explain? How much time that was for and how much longer she will work?
Um, does anybody wanna take that?
My personal opinion is. With the pandemic and everything and we're trying to do the best we can through this and through Zoom and stuff. That we really haven't had a good chance to sit down and discuss it. I feel that we shouldn't hire that position until we have a place to put that person. We have no office for that person. And I think it should be put on hold until the town office is built and we have an office for that position. So, nothing happens like what happened before. And secondly, the um part-time person, twenty-three point five hours, is that correct? Is working still. And as far as I'm concerned, the previous board voted her in in that position. Until it was no longer needed and we haven't discussed that yet.
I thought there was a set timeframe for that position when they voted her in, like twelve weeks or fifteen weeks?
No, there wasn't.
No, it wasn't. Nope, absolutely not.
Okay.
So I'm certainly going to give my.
Open the position and put it online. You should probably do a search and a search could take anywhere from three to six months. So it's probably not too early to start looking and start posting.
It it is too early because the board has not voted on what, how we're gonna replace that or what we're going to do. So um uh that has to happen first. The board needs to decide uh how and if we're going to replace that position. And then and then and then act from there. I think it will be important, my own personal opinion, is if we do replace that position. We are very clear about what the responsibilities are and very clear about what the responsibilities are not. And the limits of authority and the extent of authority. I think that.
I I agree, I agree with that, Bob. I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay.
It's a position that was open and was not eliminated. And I just wanted to know what everybody was doing about it. And you guys all just went off the air for a second. I'll I'll get your back out.
Okay, and then um so I um that that position serves at the at the pleasure of the board and the board will decide uh. Uh will decide and will set the timetable on on what to do about the position. At least that's my opinion. I'm only one of five.
When somebody sends in an email and it's public opinion. Um mail is not read. Uh this is the question, mail is not read on the air, is that right?
Emails? Absolutely not.
Okay, so if you if. The only way would be to reply to that person's email and I haven't got a reply from anyone except for Mike saying he was sorry he would get back to me. I'm in a meeting. So you may wanna clarify that.
Alright, thank you.
To the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh thank you, Sue. Thanks for calling. Alright, and then uh and now uh going back out to the public, I just wanna say that uh that call is finished. And if somebody else wants to call in, uh now would be the time. It's it's between callers and we can pick it up when you come call. I wanna pull the, uh sorry, I I I was just gonna say I don't wanna pull the trigger too quickly, but at some point we're gonna have to decide that no one else is calling.
Right, nobody else is. We'll give them one minute and then if no one else calls, I need a motion to go in executive session, please. So I have seven forty-six, we'll get it to seven forty-seven.
Well, Bob, I have a question on the um. Administrator position. Wasn't that a voted position by the town resident?
Not exactly. Um so this has been misstated a few times. Uh.
Okay.
I don't have the, I don't have the uh, I didn't anticipate the question, so I don't have the uh the language of the vote in front of me.
Okay.
But it was advisory. It was to authorize the board. To uh to go forward with looking with looking into a town manager or a town administrator. And then the subsequent vote was the approval of a budget. So uh there was no mandate that we hire one. And that uh that that needs to be made clear to everybody. It's up to us how we how we uh uh fill this position.
O- okay, I I had no idea. So that's why I asked.
We actually had that uh at one point, we'd uh 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 hang on just a second.
Another call?
Hello? Okay, hang on just a second. Yeah, uh let me put you on speaker. This is, I do have another public comment. I'm sorry, can you, can you state your name? Uh can you? Okay, uh can you state your name again?
Yes, my name is Wendy Klein Fowler.
I'm stuck, Bob. We can't hear.
We can't hear, I can't hear that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're really faint and I I've got you on speaker, but uh but no one can hear you right now.
Try again.
Hang on, I'm gonna shoot. Yeah, think one second, although. I'll go outside and maybe better. Oh, shoot. We have too many people in our house. Can I call you, can I call back? If I work better.
And I'm sorry, what was your question?
If me, I I'm gonna hang up and call right back.
Oh, sure. If you want, if that's gonna work better, then go ahead and hang up and call us right back. Alright, so uh she's gonna call from a different phone in order to make the public comment. I I personally think we need to be a little bit patient here because uh it is a. It is kinda difficult to get uh to get heard. I wanna make sure everybody can get heard. She's calling right back.
Just gonna put a clarification out there, so all the board members know this. Um, when I ran, I ran in favor of the ATV ordinance of some type. And uh, yes, my name is put on a petition in favor of having an ATV ordinance. Um so. I feel that I can talk in favor of it. I, some people feel I don't have a voice in this at all. I may have to abstain of vote. But I just wanna let the rest of the board know that, yes, my name is on a petition. In favor of the ordinance, which I actually ran. That was part of my statement when I was running for the select board, just for clarification out there.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yeah, so uh Harry, if I could chime in, that's, it was not a posi, it was not a uh, it was not, it's not a petition. Uh that was just a letter of support and I I personally don't believe you need to recuse yourself. Um, that's uh uh everybody has positions and having a position doesn't mean you have, you can't vote. Uh that's just my personal belief. But we do have somebody calling in, so let me see if we can uh uh get them on here. Hi, can you state your name?
Yes, my name is Wendy.
Uh, I am sorry, Wendy, I heard your first name. I, your na- last name uh is uh breaking up.
Okay, it's Klein Fowler.
Okay, Wendy Klein Fowler, okay.
Did you get it that time?
I I did, and now I can hear you much clearer.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I can hear you clearer now, so you can uh go ahead and start your statement.
Okay, I I'm gonna take very brief. I'm I'm just calling to track. The char- character station. Um respectfully, Tiffany's comment. Uh it was about two ten uh uh letter. Uh asking for a passport. Um to research um and analyze this issue in a townwide vote. Um, we are not anti-ATV. Um and we are. Protested in her statement weird up. Um, we are a group of concerned citizens. That are concerned about our town, the safety of the riders. Our rights as as members of the community to um enjoy. Um our town and we want, we believe this is a very important issue. That needs to be addressed and researched in a timely and thorough matter, manner. We all um. We all view taken into consideration. Um again, we are not anti-ATV. We are not weirded up. We are a group, um perhaps within our household, and we are all heart. We are a group, um, perhaps, but we're quite humble and we are all heartbroken. I just wanted to say that to you. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you for your comment and I apologize, you did break up a little bit during that. I hope everybody was able to hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, I'm, everybody, there was one other caller and I couldn't pick it up because this one was talking, so we're probably gonna have to give it one more minute and see if they call back.
While we're waiting, I'd like to say thank you to all the town employees here in the office, at the road crew, the wastewater treatment. They've been doing a remarkable job. We're dealing with the covert nineteen and following all the rules and regulations. Um, as everybody knows, it changes daily. It's still changing daily, so I just wanna say thank you to everybody who has been doing a wonderful job.
Uh, I guess so, while that's happening, uh, while we're waiting for one and I'll stop my comments if the phone, uh, phone rings again. Uh, uh, our, uh, our wastewater treatment facility got a hundred percent on their recent, uh, on their recent inspection and evaluation. So big kudos to, to Darcy.
Absolutely.
You know, I gotta pick up this call. Hi, this is the Select Board Public Comment. Can you hear me?
I can pick up.
And you are calling in for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, can you go ahead and state your name? I wanna make sure everybody can hear you. Can you state your name?
Thank you.
Hi, can you, can you state your name?
Okay, yeah, uh, it's John Machine.
Oh, John. Uh, uh, how you doing, John? And, uh, uh, um, go ahead and, uh, make your comment, uh, and, and remember we're holding everybody to the three-minute limit.
Yes, uh, okay, so what I always wanted to say is, uh, I've been hearing a lot of stuff about accidents and all this kinda stuff. Um, I have spent all of last year, a little over a year, uh, talking to people about the stuff, um, about riding, how to make it safer, um, why we should have an ordinance in place. Um, many of these people who have signed this, the letter that, uh, Ms. Zwinger put in, um, understand what their, um, you know, what the rights could be, what the rules would be. Um, for the most part, um, since like last, the, the Select Board took over and is, um, you know, doing the ordinance now. Um, I spend a lot of time trying to help out putting one in place with the village. Um, but one of the things is that, uh, when I feel that they're being harassed, they're trying to stop this. I feel like things are happening around town. Uh, I just don't see people harassing people like that. Um, what I would like to say is that, that the town has tried to do for. I've, with the many meetings, the random meetings, uh, one time two residents. And, you know, most of the residents have looked for some kind of thing, uh, some kind of peace between each other. But what we're actually fighting against is that there's still a long group of people that just want that key that is ready to have control. And I did see that there was a letter posted that said that was a letter, or that there was a, um, uh, a letter saying there was thirty-five people saying that they believe a, a task force should handle this and all that. I went to a task force meeting and it was about, they were talking specifically how not to have riding in town. Um, so I don't, I don't think that should be a, uh, a consideration at all. Um, and us, the, any private, new, they're gonna be, uh, renovation through the town. So, I just wanted to say that, um, I appreciate your, your hard work to try and get something going here. Um, I believe that people in town will, uh, able to go into this together, um, having some little bit, a little bit more structure and being able to use the things that they pay for with their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that was a little bit hard to hear and, uh.
Very hard to hear.
Yeah, so hopefully we can go back to regular meetings at some time soon.
Hopefully.
All right, I, that's probably it for the public comment, but, uh.
Yep. Um, so I need a motion to go in executive session, please.
Don't move.
A second?
Well, we have to state the reason. I think this is, uh, legal relative to property. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, I read that once. I thought we were good.
All right.
Executive session for legal and property personnel.
Don't move.
Will you be taking any action?
Jamie seconded. All right. Um, Bob?
Uh, aye.
Ronnie? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. So we'll move on into executive session?
Will you be taking any action?
So Cat TV needs to leave, please?
Angie?
Yes.
Will you be taking any action?
Uh.
I'm not sure yet.
Believe, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.